Study session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have none registered today.
Thank you. It moves on to items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which is the minutes from our July 6th regular meeting and the July 11th study session. Commissioners, have you reviewed? And if so, are we okay with moving that on to our regular agenda? Thank you. So it moves on to items for presentation and discussion. Item one is the Cedar Street and Oak Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project Bid Recommendation with Casey Colburn from Bartlett and West.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are you doing? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. No, just wanted to come before you today. I believe my letter, I had sent a memo to the city with our recommendation of accepting the bid, the alternate bid for the Oak Street and Cedar Street Stormwater Improvements from Kilo Construction. The alternate bid, which was for a different type of pipe, was a few thousand dollars cheaper and had a total of $617,626.50. So that was sent to the city. Everything that was reviewed was included correctly. That was asked for. Their schedule looks at starting at the end of September, beginning of October. So they want to do it in 2022 and have it done pretty much by the end of the year. So that's kind of in the bid is, you know, this is for the, what we came to you with the latest estimate. So the overall estimate was less than the original engineer's estimate, which was with the alternate bid, the engineer's estimate was, sorry, trying to look through there. Have a bunch of different stuff open here. Our, sorry, I'm looking at comparison here. Our bid, you know, our original estimate with contingency in it was around 800 or 825,000 or so. And then there was also some design fee on top of that. So we were well, I think, well over 700,000 when, you know, we put the estimate together without contingencies or anything like that. So the bids were really strong and came in underneath the engineer's, you know, estimate. So we felt real comfortable with them. So is there any questions, Mayor or Commissioners?
Casey, I'm just checking on this. So this would be between 13th and 15th on both Oak and Cedar?
On Cedar and Cedar would be repaved. On Oak Street is just a small segment that of a storm sewer line that runs through there on the north or on the south end of Oak closer to 15th that would have some new pipe installed and new inlets placed.
Okay, so not the full two blocks on Oak, just the...
Yes, correct. And it wouldn't be a full new curb and gutter. It wouldn't be a repaving or anything like that.
Okay, all right.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Casey?
Always let have a local contractor do the work. So I like that. That's always been good.
I do have, I guess, a discussion I'd like to have with the commission. I've had some heartache since day one when this was brought to our attention about any additional funds that were going to be spent widening the street. From what I understand, it's only going to be three to four feet. There are some dollars in there that I think could be spent somewhere else. And I know it may be late, too late in the game. But I'd like to hear how the other Commissioners feel. And then also, you know, we could ask Casey if we would like to see a change, what process we would have to go through in order to amend, if we even could, this bid from Kilo.
So the current bid is widening the street three to four feet.
Correct.
So to kind of match to 7th Street.
In portions, yes.
Yeah, how it's wider.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I start the discussion?
Please, absolutely.
Come on up.
Welcome back.
Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you. Thank you. What I would do, I think, in order to start that discussion is this. As we have looked at Cedar Street, there are a number of places that staff, as we looked at, believes that widening, widening of that street, since it is such a main thoroughfare, makes a lot of sense. 13th to 15th in particular, where, you know, we are right there at the hospital, a lot of emergency service vehicles that access that, that on a regular basis. And then just the traffic that comes off of 15th Street. Those two are very main thoroughfares in this community. We looked at it both ways, you know, and it can be left like it is. It certainly can. But to widen, we believed was looking to the future at that point in time. We're not, we don't believe as staff that we're going to see less traffic there at any given point in time. If anything, it could become busier. You know, we have a, an emergency service station there now that quite honestly, we believe will either be expanded or could be another one. They're very close, you know, just because need is going to drive that. So from a staff's point of view, that is the reason that we brought this forth with the widening of the street. Again, you know, that is, can be a commission decision. And I'm sure as we talk to Casey, that that is something that can be backed out of the process. But I will reiterate that staff believes that it makes full sense to widen that street just like it does in some other places where either it's already been done or it's going to need to be done, you know, whether it's people parking on the street, whatever that might be. There's the widening, just we believe makes some sense. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
So Mayor...
Go ahead, Casey.
I was going to say that just in quantities base, meaning the additional pavement for that area and the base that goes underneath that, because you're still, you're still removing all the curb and gutter and your demos all the same, things like that. So really what the big change is, you have a few extra feet of pipe that I'm going to say is kind of negligible for the three to four feet. But for the, for the widening, you're looking at probably $60,000 just kind of based on what Kilo's provided, but that's their unit cost based on the quantities that was in the plans. So it would have to be something that's discussed with them to see what, you know, what that type of change order looks like with that. But there would also be some redesign fee on our end to get the plans back to reissue to the contractor to narrow the street back up. So we would have to do that. And we kind of have some of that work done from previous, but it's still getting the plans back together. And, you know, the, the next step of this is to, once, you know, if it is approved by the commission, is to notify utility companies so they can begin the work, getting their utilities out of the way so that the contractor can begin work at that date.
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah, I would say from my perspective, kind of along the lines of that, like the future, thinking ahead. I know personally, driving it, it's a lot nicer down here where it's wider and meet someone. And then the forward thought of having to come back in time if we ever want to do it and demoing work that's 10, 15 years old. You know, we're kind of already obviously tearing up the roadway. So I would think now would be the time if we want to add it, if we see a need in the future, as you said, while it's already tore up now, to do it instead of coming back in later and then patching. That gives us a seam that over time is just going to, I think, you know, degrade the road, you know, if we try to add the width later instead of in a single pour.
I agree. I think it's be the time to do it. It's not that much. I thought at one time we were talking about it was close to 150,000 or 200,000, but it's going to be 60 or 70. I think it's a pretty reasonable expense going forward. I'd say so. I'd say, yeah, widen is a good idea.
I agree. I think I'm good with widening it. I know that for a portion there, there's no parking, I believe, on one side, maybe in the hospital block. But it never fails, like usually, somebody, you know, an Amazon vehicle or something is pulled over running across the street and it gets a little squeezed there, so.
I think one thing we need to remember of that, that particular part of the community is that that's the highest density elementary school. And so there's a tremendous amount of traffic, albeit only twice a day. It still is a tremendous amount of traffic that comes in and out of that school at that time. And I think widening it adds some safety components there to kids who may choose to dart across the street or it gives you some extra room and there's some safety component there.
So Commissioners, are you okay with moving this on to our agenda for Wednesday then? Or would you like to discuss it for another week? Were we under any kind of time constraints for Kilo, Casey?
Their bonds do have a limit in them, you know, that they need to be returned. But I think that, let's see, I'm trying to look at my calendar for next week, that we should be good until after the first, so first of the month of next month. But the only real time constraint now is we do want to get everything in front. If the commission is good with it, we want to get the plans to the utility contractors or utility companies to get gas and fiber and everything relocated and get on their schedules.
And just for the Commissioners' awareness, we had already replaced water line on the east side of Cedar. And we are ready and pipe is in the yard to replace on the west side as a part of this project. So we're gaining several things here along with the road itself.
Do you have to move any poles by?
Well, there will be a couple of poles that have to be moved. We already looked at them. That's not going to be an issue.
Does anybody else have anything in those eastmosts?
I cannot answer that question because I haven't been there yet. But I'm sure there is some other stuff. I'd be willing to bet there's gas there someplace, but I don't know exactly.
AT&amp;T?
Yeah, there's a few fiber, a Vive and AT&amp;T in the area. And that's, you know, getting on their schedule and giving them heads up is, as we know, as we ran into on 15th Street.
And Casey, I'm assuming if and when approved, that Kilo will have a conversation with the neighbors there of just the sheer nature of how they're going to enter and access their, their houses?
Yes, and part of Bartlett and West's scope of work is hosting a public meeting with the contractor. Same thing we did on 15th and Ash Street and talking with them about access, you know, giving them the points of contact of, you know, who they should call if, you know, there is something, what that is, and kind of getting everybody on the same page. I think it worked pretty well for 15th and Ash Street. So they didn't feel like that they were, you know, kind of out in left field. But it's a, we'll work with the city to get the list of addresses of everybody that we want to mail it to and have a kind of an open house forum prior to construction.
Great, thank you.
And if there's people that we don't see in those open houses, we will keep track. And our folks, you know, will be out there helping with that process. We will make contact one way or another.
Commissioners, how would you like to proceed on item one?
Oh, I did one question for Casey. I saw with the alternate bid of 16, 617,625.50. And then basically when it was itemized, it's 676 for the subtotal. Is that the same or is there a portion of that that's coming out?
So I'm not following Mr. Clayton on that.
On the Bartlett and West, basically like the itemized bid list?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that's just your guys' estimate before?
Yeah, that's our estimate. It was 676. The 617 was, was Kilo's.
Okay, thank you.
And if everything goes right, Casey, this could get started. How soon?
So this is, we need, we want to be very clear with this with the landowner or the property owners. Is utility work will probably, would begin probably by the end of summer, hopefully. But Kilo's would not be on site until late September, early October.
So it'd be done by the end of the year?
Yes, the plan is to have it done by the end of the year.
Ready.
Well, I mean, personally, I'm fine with putting it on the agenda for Wednesday. Otherwise, we've got to wait two weeks. I'd delay. We've talked about this almost a year ago, start with, I remember, right? So it's not like it's new to us today, but that'd be my opinion.
I think we have consensus to move it over to our agenda for Wednesday. So that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Casey.
No problem. Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. We're going to move down to item three, which is Modern Income Housing, MIH Process and Next Steps with Mike Hall and Paul Bean. Gentlemen, come on up.
Thank you. Paul's going to give you an update about the July 12th event. And then I'll go over some of, some of the steps and considerations after that.
Good afternoon. We, many of you were there. I think we had a great event on the 12th. Ryan Benson from the Kansas Housing was there and gave a good presentation on the MIH. We had, I would say, 25 to 30 people there, developers and builders. It was a good audience and had some good constructive conversations with them after, after Brian was done talking. Felt like, made some good connections and appreciate Wayne Finch helping us put that together. He kind of coordinated that with Mr. Benson's schedule and got us the location. And Laura helped us get the messages out. So I appreciate all the work that she did on that. Really a nice team effort. But I thought it was a great way to get attention. I've got follow-up calls with a couple of folks. They reached out to me today wanting to sit down and visit. So I think it was, it was a good outcome. And Mike's done a great job pulling stuff together. So I'll let him give you the details.
Thank you. Yeah, so there's not a lot of time between now and the, and the application deadline. So apologize, not able to get this in the packet. Wanted to coordinate with other folks. And had to do that after. Yeah, so if you look down at the bottom of this, the highlighted items are the, the items that will involve you directly, involve the city commission directly. So the deadline at the bottom, September 30th. We have started to have a contract with Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission. So that's a step that's important that is taking place. We're collecting information about housing supply and demand. We have some information. We have a housing study from a year ago. That needs to be kind of refreshed and there's a way to do that. So today we're just asking for your input about the process and preferences. I'll talk about that in a minute. So next step, prepare an RFP, Requests or Proposals. And that's going to be something pretty brief, but give, give folks out there an idea about what they need to do to, to submit projects. One thing that has to be very clear is that the developers, builders that are interested in this, they're not applying themselves or submitting a project for our consideration. It would be in the city's application. Could be more than one project, but we need to get that word out. Quick turnaround here, really to, to get this reviewed before you, for your consideration. We need those project proposals by the 8th of August. We'll evaluate those and then they'll get on your agenda or the recommendations will get on your agenda the 22nd of August, 29th. And then you'll be asked to adopt a resolution to support the application on September 7th. Hopefully we'll get some projects to consider. But we've had a lot of discussions with people. We think there's a lot of interest. The, so the next thing is, you know, one of the things that came out of this discussion on the 12th was, well, what do you want to see? What are you interested in seeing? And that's a big part of this, this meeting today or is part of today. So if you go to the second sheet, this will hopefully stimulate your thinking on this question. So if you look at the Request for Proposals put out by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, some of the funding priorities that are relevant to Ottawa, areas with a demonstrated ongoing housing need. Ottawa, your businesses are growing, people are looking for housing. And that is illustrated by not only the increase in the building permits we've issued, the single family primarily over the last few years, but also by vacancy rates. And vacancy rates, that's a hard data, set of data that we don't necessarily have, but we, we have some idea of what they are currently by the folks we've talked to. Also areas that have difficulty filling employment positions due to the lack of housing stock. So as we promote economic development in the county and the city, proximity park, et cetera, those people have to be able to find housing for their employees or employees even to be able to find housing. And so that's, those two things work hand in hand. So what type of housing is needed to attract and retain the workforce? So I think it's understood that the housing that's needed is workforce housing. And that's really what moderate income housing is about primarily. So single family detached homes, attached single family, duplexes, multifamily. So last year, we issued 38 building permits for single family detached homes, one permit for duplex. So not a lot of multifamily, not a lot, mostly single family. This year, no, no permits have been issued for duplexes yet, no permits have been issued for multifamily. We are on track to exceed 38 for single family this year. Grant applications should address how development will provide a solution to the housing needs of the region. So this is in the RFP, I meant housing needs, ability to attract new businesses through housing development. Something to consider is the moderate income housing program is for moderate income, moderate incomes. It's to capture that need that is not captured by the low income housing tax credit, the affordable housing incentives that have been out there for years and are still, those can still be built. Keep in mind, 60 to 150% of median household income, that's how moderate housing income, excuse me, that's how moderate income housing is defined. And this is according to the HUD's fiscal year 22, 22 income limits. This is in the RFP, the state's RFP. 60% for a single person household, that's, that's about 36,000 a year for a four person household. That's 52,000 a year. 150%, that's about 91,000 for a single person household and 130,000 for a four person household. So another, another thing to think about as, as we review project ideas is the ability of the developer to complete the project within a reasonable time. So one thing that we would not want to happen is you make application and then the project doesn't go through. And there are ways to help ensure that that does not happen, but that's a consideration also.
Let me ask that question there, what? How do we, how does the commission ensure that the entity they pick has the financial wherewithal to complete the project?
That's, that's a question for our consultants, I would say. I talked to Susan, our consultant's helping us with this. And she said that the way they've done that is through some kind of memorandum of understanding. It, it isn't, it isn't inescapable, but, but that's, I don't know to what extent we can look at financial capacity and all of that. I, that's a question I probably need to answer.
So another question, at least I constantly hear, and I know what the market was like when I moved here, is that we don't have enough of a rental market to meet the demand or apartment market. So Mike, what are you adhering, even if it's anecdotal about that?
So I've talked to a few folks. I talked to a property manager who manages a lot of properties in, in Ottawa. And she said that right now, her vacancy rate on the property she manages is probably around 3%. Healthy vacancy rate is probably eight or 10%, something like that. I asked that person, what kind of housing do you think we need? And she says, all of the above. But, but when you look at what's happened over the last couple of years, we really haven't built a lot of multifamily. And I think that's, that's, that's what you understand from the housing study and I don't understand from what you're hearing.
Multifamilies, for the housing study, multifamily is our number one need. She's right, all of the above, but first and foremost is the multifamily from the housing study.
Could that include duplexes? Do you consider duplex multifamily? Okay.
I think somebody moving to town may need to buy a house a little bit of the reach for some people when they're income levels, whereas moving into a duplex, I'm just thinking about the Prairie Fire was a great example of how that quickly that filled up and the waiting list beyond those that got filled. So I'm kind of thinking, hey, we're a few years behind getting that accomplished. So I kind of agree with duplexes or multifamily to be an area to press.
Like you said, I think apartment complexes have been in need. I know there's one, I'm not sure if the one behind Sonic in that area is income based. There's one on 17th that is, CNA South or one of those two I know is income based. And kind of like you were saying, I see a lot of young professionals, it's probably more comfortable to move to a town, get an apartment for a year, whatever your lease period would be, and find a home. And so, you know, like that, kind of like these multifamily places to rent, to kind of land and then find somewhere to buy, I think, I would say.
You know, that guarantee of completion, I think that's a good point. I don't know if there's a way we can request some kind of a guarantee letter from a bank that they've got the financing for that. Because typically when a person buys a house and they can offer, they got to have that letter of guarantee from a bank that they're approved for financing anyway. So I don't know why we couldn't ask for the same thing. Some kind of a completion guarantee or whatever you want to call it.
So I'm a zoning person. I mean, I kind of keep, you know, I pay attention to that kind of thing. And if someone has a project that requires substantial rezoning action, it's not out of the question necessarily, but there's some uncertainty to that.
Do you think part of the reason, obviously anecdotally, that we're not seeing duplexes or multifamilies is partially zoning and needing to do special use permits? If, because a lot of the infill lots are probably, we need a special use permit for a duplex or anything, correct?
I don't really know the answer to that question. I don't, I don't think, I'm not certain that's the case. Because we do have quite a lot of R2 zoning out there that does a lot of duplexes. So it's a good question. I don't really understand why per review of states wasn't completed. I think it has something to do with... I think it has something to do with stormwater detention and managing stormwater, as someone told me, but so I really don't know why.
But there are some significant areas zoned R2 for that type of development. My, my feeling is that multifamily development in some ways is more expensive than single-family.
Yeah, I agree. I think we've had a lot of internal investment in our community from folks that live here. And a lot of those builders are single-family home builders. They're not multifamily home builders. So that's going to take kind of a bigger developer that's going to come in hopefully and make that investment. Because there's, there's a lot of paperwork to do before you even, you know, break ground. And we don't have, you know, the builders here in town don't have teams in order to do that. So, but this would certainly help. M I H would certainly help. It was utilized on Prairie View, and it certainly could be utilized on another project in the future.
When you get the four units per building, it goes into the I B C, it's a commercial building code. So in terms of building codes, it's treated like a commercial building. So it's a little, it's a different animal. So I think that's a good point. We, the builders that are here, they know what, you know, what they're used to building, and that's what they build.
So what are you looking from, from the commission today? This is a really great start, so.
This is fairly informal. Just wanted to get a, a read of what you'd like to see, if that's possible. We wouldn't like, first of all, our stakeholders want to know that before they put together a proposal. And also wouldn't want to start going down the road on something and get to the meetings at the end of August. And it's not at all what you're interested in saying or what you support. So again, this is supportive. We've heard some comments, I think. I think that, keep in mind, when we get a project idea, we're not asking for construction documents. We're going to get conceptual plans, but I think there's a certain amount of information I think we need to get in order to evaluate it. But that's pretty basic, I think.
So, so are you asking the commission where they think the priority is? Because in all fairness, if there is a specific priority for the commission, you need to put that out there, even though you're going to take other applications. In all fairness to people submitting, they ought to know where your priority is on housing.
If, if we're talking specifically M I H, I would put the priority certainly on multifamily. I mean, like I said, we've had a lot of internal investment and I think that can continue. But if we're talking specifically M I H, I'm in favor of multifamily, for sure.
And multifamily is defined as?
Well, I mean duplexes for sure, but I mean apartments, apartments, I mean, we certainly weren't, what did it say? Hundred units short or something like that? I can't remember what the housing, it said we're significantly short.
Yeah, without any growth, yeah, we're going to catch up. So yeah, the multifamily would be apartments or duplexes. So if you're, if you're saying, you know, feel free to let, let applicants understand, those would be looked at probably more favorably than a single-family development. That's what's going to help them decide what they want to package or what they want to pursue. And again, remember what you say now doesn't have to be what you do in four months, because this is three times. And so this is kind of quick. It's very short. He's done a phenomenal job trying to squeeze it in. But there may be, you know, if we have success on this one with a, with an apartment complex, just to say, then the next time you may say, well, this time we want specifically duplexes or specifically senior housing, or it can be anything you want. But so you're not committing for the rest of the program. It's just per session, we probably want to come back and say, do you have a different preference? Where do you want to go with the same preference?
And again, there are the subsequent rounds. So the way that works is there'll be another RFP from K H R C that comes out in November or January application probably, and then there's going to be another one after that for a spring.
So we have this conversation every four months.
I'm okay with that.
Hopefully, we'll get some project ideas. I think the other thing too is return on investment. I mean, that's not the right term, but bang for your buck. So you go through this whole process, if it's for four dwellings, it's not as compelling as if it's for twenty, you know?
Well, a, a real case scenario would be, okay, Calmar's expanding, they hope to get up to eighty new jobs. It probably fit in this. So where, if we were able to capture all eighty, which we won't, but hopefully we could capture some of that right now, to your point, where would they go? So this could be a tool for that, and that's where we're hoping between the incentives and what's happening in the community and communicating like we did with the developers and builders. Just now that here's an opportunity, let's all go together and hand in hand, and we'll be very successful together, hopefully. And we've got a big project up by here in DeSoto, so there'll be a tidal wave coming our direction.
Heard something about that.
Even for construction workers, really, I mean, the construction worker out there.
Everybody, your engineers.
If you read your Labor Shed study, it is not inconceivable to put money into multifamily, apartment living, duplexes, whatever, people will drive to go work. It is not, my guess is that whatever you build out of this round still won't be enough. But it gets a start on it.
Well, and the developer I was talking to today is basically comment, which I love, was not everybody wants, they may work in the city, but they don't want to live in the city. They like the smaller community, like the light's slower, it's more enjoyable, you know? But we all know it, because we live it and love it. But we're seeing more of that. And you're also seeing more of that with your work at home crowd vacating the metropolitan area. Because they can work, live anywhere they want. So now I can drive to the store in five minutes instead of twenty-five minutes. So they, we're seeing some of that too, young professionals.
Paul says is exactly right. There are people who don't want to work where they live.
Yeah. But I think, I think being able to say multifamily's going to be the most favorable is helpful in what we present.
And that includes duplexes.
It includes duplexes.
And it would have a filter effect too, you know? There are folks living in single-family homes right now that may not want to, to get some multifamily apartments. Those will filter into there, which will open up the single-family residences for folks who do that.
Thank you.
But we're open to all projects. So bring them all, bring them all, for sure.
Well, there could be some innovative, there could be some innovative single-family. It's not your, if it's a certain need, maybe it's a smaller unit or.
They want to build fifty of them, then that's done.
Absolutely, for sure.
So we just one developer we would work with though, and we can't have multiple, is that correct? Is that, I remember in last time we had two, we just chose one.
I know.
I mean, it's not the same program.
Yes, and Blaine asked that question. I can't quite remember how she answered it, because she didn't shy away from multiple applicants.
I was told that it's not out of the question to have multiple applicants. There might be, there might be something that's beneficial about that, especially if you're, you know, capturing two different needs.
And I think that when we went through the process with the Prairie Fire thing, there was limit, more, there was limited funds. So they, they wanted us to make a decision in a sense, because that's what they told us, because they wanted us to feel like we were, you know, really involved with one project. Where there's more, there's more funds now available. So I think they're spreading it a little bit more.
We can go back and get clarification.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Each of these will have a five million dollar bucket. They did indicate the first bucket, they're going to probably fund some programs that had already applied. And that was probably around two million. At first, I thought this first bucket, there'd be a ton of applications. And then when I saw the timeline, I thought, well, if we can get one in, we might be one of the few that can get pulled out. So I think there's some advantage if we can get something pretty decent this first one, because the timeline's going to prohibit. That second bucket may be where everybody's ready.
I want to eye in the second.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll just tell you this, if you think multifamily is a priority, it doesn't hurt to have that in that RFQ. So somebody that is thinking about doing multifamily will put an application in.
Did we give you an answer?
Yes, I think so.
Good, just making sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that'll move us back to item two, which is a continued review of our 2023 operating budget. Our revenue neutral rate, mill rate recommendation with Director Lanes. And you, if you'd like to say anything.
No.
Okay. Leave it up to her again?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll just provide anecdotal.
All right. Okay, so this is a continued discussion of what we started last Monday, but it's also, a lot more information was provided to you. And I want to not scare you off with that, because it's really intended for us to have further conversations, some now, some for later when we get to the public hearing and/or adoption process. Okay, this time it's not my fault. Last time it was. So I, what I might say and tell then is that in the packet, what you were given was, there is a lengthy memo, but does have a little bit more discussion about the other funds and some notable items that we've included in the way that we pulled this together. As well as a lot of, some are details, some are summary sheets, but for all of the budgeted funds. Now, the reason that we didn't give you all of the detailed line items for every single fund is because it may not be relevant to your conversation yet, because we haven't made some decisions yet. So say, for example, in your utility funds, the way that they've been presented to you as a summary page includes things, items as in we're paying cash for them now, but they also, in the revenues, they're budgeted as including some sort of a rate increase or rate change that we want to bring to you at a later conversation, but before we adopt the budget. So giving you the detailed line items, those might change, and we didn't want to cause confusion with that. Same way in the general fund. So we are talking about some of these items that you have on here today. And when you decide what you want to publish that maximum mill levy at, we can come back and make changes to some of those things. We do have some flexibility to still accomplish what we need to accomplish, but be able to do it within the confines of, of that budget that we're presenting to you. So from that perspective, no, not yet. All right, there we go. Can you, can you guys see, can you see the rooming? Sorry, it's kind of an awkward place to sit.
Your hair is in the way.
I know. I'm going to move over here and out of the way, because you don't need to see me, but I know you can always hear me. Okay, the couple of things that we really want to talk about today is, the first several items are really a review. And it's a review of the things that we discussed last Monday for several reasons. Because it's really important to remember or to be, be reminded of why we're doing some of the things that we're doing, why we're under the timeline that we are, and what has led us to this part of the conversation, and then where we're going from there. But at the end of our conversation, what we would need from you is, we're, we would be requesting to add two items to Wednesday's agenda. The one item in particular is the item that will set the maximum mill rate that you can consider at your public hearing. And that would be done in the form of an intent form that Franklin County has developed. That is all part of that SB thirteen revenue neutral rate process that's set by the state. And so the deadline to turn that into the county is Wednesday, July twentieth. However, that doesn't define.
By the close of business day?
I'm sorry?
By the close of business day? They didn't set any time you had to have it in?
No.
All right, just checking.
No, no, and I spoke with them today, and she's, she understands what our meeting is and how it will work. The other item would be a request to publish the notice of public hearing, which would be, which would coincide with that intent form. To get us started or as a review, if you were listening in last week, this is our assessed valuation trend. So if you look at the very right-hand corner, our current assessed valuation is one hundred and twenty-two million, which is a ten point six, ten point six seven percent increase over last year. What this means is that every one mil is equal to a hundred and twenty-two thousand forty-seven dollars. So every time that we want to talk about half mil, a quarter mil, a full mil, we, it's a division of that number. That's how it's, it is calculated. As you can see, there's just a slight, you know, we are level for twenty sixteen, seventeen, there's a big increase in eighteen, then we level back off for a little while, and then there's an increase again. So when we're putting together a budget or when we're putting together estimates early on in the year, before we get these, it's really tough to know where we're going to land. When we initially brought you a budget conversation early in the year, we started talking with the department heads, and they presented their request to you, we were estimating somewhere around five percent to be conservative, and then it came in at ten point six seven. This illustration is just to show you where we have come from in our current mill levy. So in twenty sixteen, our mil was forty-eight point eight zero two, and currently in twenty twenty-two, it's forty-five point nine six eight. We did have a little upward flip in twenty eighteen, but since twenty eighteen till now, we have subtly decreased the mill levy to the tune of three point four mils since twenty eighteen. This slide is an illustration of the calculation for revenue neutral rate. I do not expect you to be able to begrudge this in your sleep, but it does just show you how, that there is a math calculation behind this. And it is the total tax dollars from last year, total add the lower that we budgeted for last year against that new assessed valuation. If you divide those out, you get the mil rate, the current revenue neutral rate of that forty-one point five three six. Currently in twenty twenty-two, our mil rate is forty-five point nine six eight. So that is four and a half mils less than last year, or five hundred and forty thousand dollars less than last year. If you were to decide that you wanted to meet the revenue neutral rate this year, you would need to find approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars in cuts to make that happen.
Do we know very many cities do that?
No. No, in fact.
I don't know how you could.
You can't, and I, I think that even the, even when the state will tell you not to say that you're, even if you intend to meet it, there's some things that fluctuate that you have zero control over. So the assessed valuation that they give us in June is just an estimate. The actual valuation doesn't even come out till October. So even if you got close or decided you wanted to make all of those cuts, you may not actually even meet it. And secondly, most of the cities, I, all of the cities that I know of, and I'm not saying that's all cities, just the ones that I, we've had conversations with in kind of a finance officers forum, none of them are meeting the revenue neutral rate because they're finding it's just not possible to do that. It really wasn't put in, this is my opinion, it really wasn't put in place in order to force you to meet that rate, but instead as a notification to your public to say, listen, your, last year you paid this much in taxes, and this year, if you wanted to pay the same exact amount in taxes as last year, their mil rate, you, the city's mil rate, would need to be this number. So it's just a notification to them, and a reminder that as assessed valuation goes up, some of that you don't have any control over, because you're not controlling that valuation. And you are controlling the, the, the number, the amounts that goes with the functions you're providing for city services. And sometimes those don't match, but it's really meant as a communication tool.
That's why I was thinking, Sarah, you were president of the last year, so you've probably heard this too, in many, very few cities.
I, I can't, I've talked to, I don't want to give you a number, but a, a large number of individuals. I've yet to meet one that has said that they're going to be able to meet that R and R.
Yeah.
In the last, like, three weeks.
This is just a bullet point reminder of why or what we have as next steps as a result of that process. So the action that we have to turn over to the county no later than the twentieth, which is Wednesday, it, it does. which is Wednesday, it does set the maximum mill levy that you can assign to your budget. Now, you can make that be anything that you want today or Wednesday. It could, it doesn't have to be even what I proposed to you in your packet. It could be a mil higher, it could be half a mil higher, it could be actually any number that you pull out to put there, and that's what we'll publish, and that'll be your maximum. Now, when you get around to the public hearing, you can adopt anything lower in any one fund. And you, so you could come back and say, now, now we've got the chance or the opportunity to make some decisions as to how we want to spend those dollars, and then you can adopt a budget that reflects the actual mill levy. There's some pros and cons to that, one of them being if it's too much higher, obviously it might cause some concern for your public, and you have to answer some questions related to that. But there is nothing wrong with setting a maximum that might give you the flexibility to be able to make some decisions later that you haven't had a chance to talk about.
So we'll put another way, this year's mill levy is 45.968 mils. If you wanted to meet, if you wanted it not to drop below what you do this year, that's the number you would publish at, or any higher number. And then knowing that when you do your budget hearing, you can always lower, which has happened, you can always lower below what your published hearing is at.
To your point, and my next slide, I'll be able to show you this. The.
One more thing, a half a mil would bring you in about $61,000, right?
It would. Right now, we're sitting at 0.522 mils, exactly lower than last year, and that is $63,700 if you wanted to have the exact mill levy as last year. And so just to make sure I note the last couple items, we do still have to do a public hearing notice like we've normally done. Last year, I believe we published two public hearings for the same night, one being to exceed the revenue neutral rate, one to adopt or to a public hearing for the budget. This year, the state proposed that you could do any number of things you can hold separate, or you can hold them together. So what we're proposing for you in the form that we have as a draft in your packet is that you notice the public for two hearings to occur at one time because ultimately you're doing the exact same thing, one to exceed the revenue neutral and adopt the same maximum mill levy at the same time. And so we do have to still give notice to the residents on top of the county will, and the purpose behind having this to the county by the July 20 date is so that they can notice in writing every resident within the city of Ottawa, or at least every residential address within the city of Ottawa, in commercial, I guess, that the intent of what that might be for the public hearing. So they will get something mailed to them, and then we will also need to publish something in the newspaper and on our website.
So it's two separate hearings, or can they run concurrently?
They can be together, and that's how we have this drafted for you in the packet is that they'll be held at the same time.
But the revenue neutral hearing comes before the budget.
This year, it doesn't have to be separate. It can be at the same time. You just open them both at the same time for the same. Yep. So this is just a snippet of what, we did provide a whole draft sheet, but it was going to be really small on the screen. So this is to the right, in the very right yellow column, the budget we're proposing is the 45.446. Each one of the top three funds are the three funds that we directly have control over, and each of them are proposed to you at level, I guess I'm off just slightly on debt service and auditorium by probably a few dollars, which is what made the difference in that the calculations surrounding things. But, but those are presented to you as a level mill rate as last year. I did put in there the R and R calculation to the right, the actual revenue neutral rate itself is the 41.536, and the form itself does notate that, and that's part of what the public will see. I don't know if there's a whole lot more to talk about on here other than to get into the funds and just talk about them individually. This is just a snip of what the form looks like that we will give to Franklin County. Each city within the county or each taxing entity within the county will send the same form to Franklin County so they can use this to notice the public. And you can see that we are setting the date of hearing, and we are setting the maximum mill levy when we approve this form. This is the library fund. You've heard from the library's director and have that conversation. If you'd like to talk more about it, we can, but we don't need to necessarily spend more time on this fund unless you want to. Their budget does represent a 0.519 mil reduction for 2023, and that the appropriation they're asking for is 1,148,739. And as if you'll remember, that in past years and with every year, part of that revenue, part of our process in producing this for you is that we are estimating what their motor vehicle taxes are going to be, just like we estimate what our motor vehicle taxes are going to be. And a lot of times, those estimates are conservative, and they generally always come in higher than what we estimate. So towards the end of the year, we will typically always bring to you a budget amendment so that we can then push the rest of those dollars back out to them that we received in the year. Oftentimes, we don't know what that amount's going to exactly be, but. So you will probably see an amendment this year, and again, next year, just because we don't know what those are going to be. Do you have questions on the library at all? No need to. Okay. Auditorium fund, we've talked about this fund, you received the presentation. It is a property tax fund supported fund, and we are presenting it to you with a level mill levy approach with the idea that we're including the difference in revenue as being used for reserve for future projects. And we've talked about the auditorium needs for facility improvements. This could be used for either some sort of finance project or eventually build towards cash payment, towards some sort of improvement. We've talked about seating and carpet replacement, all of the types of things that need to occur at the facility so it can look and feel as great as the events that are being held are right now. The debt service fund, this fund has a lot of movement, it looks like, as far as transfers in and coming from different funds, but its purpose is very limited. So you can only use a debt service fund for the payment of principal and interest towards GO bonds, and whether that is short term or long term bonds, but that is all that can be paid from here. So what we have built into here is all of the transfers for the projects that are related to each of those funds transferring money in. And then we have a reserve set in here for the payoff of the COGS once that money comes in from the land bank fund, and then also money towards future debt. And it was proposed to you as a level mill levy as well. This is a summary of the general fund, and I want to start by giving you a caveat that there were some slight changes within the detail part of the general fund. The outcome's still the same, but we did make some slight adjustments internally. We went through line by line in every department and made sure that we had actually made all the changes and tied it all out. And so it does, as proposed to you, include a reserve fund balance of 384,250. We did provide to you again the breakdown of some of the things that are included that were requested from you initially, and then also a breakdown of those items that we've already made some changes to in order to accomplish this level mill rate. And if you'll recall, we talked to you a little bit about when we first started this process and every, all the departments brought to you their requests. We were just about a million dollars over where we needed to be to bring to a level mill rate request. And so everybody went back through their budgets, and we've made adjustments. We've gotten updated project estimates. We've tried to determine, you know, what makes the most sense for lease purchases. We've removed anything that might have seemed duplicate from this year for vehicles and equipment, and we recommended some other changes that are included on this list, which things that, like, for instance, the future upgrade from software. Instead of asking for a standard amount of an allowance in 2023, we'll see if there's extra funds at the end of each year and start building towards that. In addition to the communications liaison position, we were recommending the comprehensive plan update being moved out potentially funded by some ARPA funds. We have a compensation study that we got a revised estimate on. There's a few other things included in there. I don't know if there's anything on here particularly that you want to talk about. We got a revised estimate to repurpose the brush truck, but took some creative thinking on their part to come up with a different way to do that, and were able to find $55,000 in savings towards making that a useful brush truck, but still with a different, a different look and feel to it. At the last time we got together, last Monday, can I ask you something more? I was, I believe at the end, if we could bring back anything that might still be some available options for lease purchase changes we could make if you wanted to either reduce the mill levy, create capacity within the general fund, any of those things. And here's kind of a short list of items. At the top, above the line, these items are things that, if they have a budget impact on the right, that is, if we were to finance those vehicles and equipment over five years, you could find that amount of savings in the 23 budget. Of course, then that would stretch out for five years to be able to do that. Now, if you're looking for capacity within the general fund, I would suggest that you give us the ability to come back with or find a way to make that happen through this type of approach. But instead of you saying, hey, instead, let's go lease purchase that one flatbed truck. What we're finding this year, and we're anticipating it's probably going to stretch into next year, is that we might have thought we were going to lease purchase this one particular vehicle in that year, but in reality, that one particular vehicle isn't even available right now and may or may not be available until next year. So that would give us the ability to, I guess, fluctuate our plan and how we can finance. If we can then, we could come back to you and say, okay, we're going to assign this amount to vehicles, and then once we get to the beginning of next year, and we kind of see what this vehicle market looks like, we can reassign how we're going to accomplish paying for those vehicles at that time. But it does give you the idea here, at least, that if you, if you were to, to lease purchase any one of those larger vehicles or equipment, you know, you do see quite a reduction in one year. Of course, then just spreading that out over time, so that is one option. We did already build into the budget lease purchasing the salt spreader, so I did take that out of the options. Below were some other financing options for facility improvements that we've talked about. Some of them were in here included originally, and some of them were not, but all of them are things that need to be accomplished. And we've talked about at length internally what it might look like to finance some facility improvements and then turn around and pay for those over 10 years because truly everything in here is not just a maintenance item. They are actually extending the life of the facility itself. And so even if we were to, I think that's somewhere around $2 million in improvements overall between facilities, and that annual payment would not actually come from the general fund, which also creates capacity in your general fund. It would then instead be paid from the debt service fund, which we did keep that reserve in there, and it would be able to accommodate that long term over 10 years. Just a different way of looking at it, just another way of finding the ability to get some of those things done. Do you want to talk more about the general fund before we move on? Or would you want to move on through the rest of them and then come back and talk about it? What's your preference?
Just sort of get into the general fund. Just have a conversation. We're going to have to dive in at one point. We've just got to dive in and have a conversation. I have, I know that we have talked about, I don't know, countless years about having, and I know we've named it different things every single year, but this year it's named community liaison in our budget. And we've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it. Now, I had some conversations with a few city managers and a couple different, a couple different commissioners from across the state who have this exact, or someone who looks very similar, that position looks very similar. And I can't tell you how important it has been to that, to those communities, and how it has changed, how the story is being told of that community. And I really would like to see this, this particular position continue in the budget. And I don't know how we go about doing that. And I don't necessarily have, you know, a magic wand that I'm going to pull out of my bag to figure out how we're going to do that, but I certainly would like to see it continue into our budget. And I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to remove it, if at all possible.
I'm trying to figure out how it can be a part-time job. Is my question, or is it a part-time job for them, or is that something?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Can you give us, I mean, in those discussions, can you give us some of the highlights of what they said? Were like, how it was beneficial, what they did, some of the things that they, that that position did? Did it really benefited?
Yeah, and I don't have like a, I didn't work up like an Excel worksheet or whatever, or some kind of highlights, but did have a conversation. Like, for example, in the city of Pittsburgh, they hired an individual who did similar to what I think that this position would do. And they have kind of, they saw their readership in their newspaper, kind of plummet, but their newspaper is kind of coming back. But, and then they saw, social media was really kind of telling the story of their community. And then they brought somebody in and were able to change how that looks. And I think not only was it beneficial for citizens that live within the community, but I think it actually had an economic development component and a positive impact. They just brought in, I think, was it FedEx or one of the major companies that are bringing in? And FedEx said to them, it mattered that we saw this on your Facebook page, that we saw this in your, what you were doing, that you saw, we saw positive things happening and the story being told about your community, and it mattered. And it's one of the reasons that we decided to come here. So I think it's not only just being communication from within here, I think it's us telling a story from, on the outside, too. And I'm hearing that from other communities, too, but Pittsburgh is the first one that I would, I would bring to you.
You know, there's a lot of communities similar to our size, and we compare that a lot. Sometimes we look at utilities and things like that, Midfield and, I can't think of one more. Maybe some other communities our size.
Lewisburg has this position. Lewisburg has this position.
They're much smaller.
Pittsburgh has this position. Topeka, I was looking at. I mean, there's lots of other communities that are our size, that are, I think, similar to us, that have this position.
And any of them have a part-time person doing that?
No.
Or full-time with benefits and everything? So we're talking, how much in the budget was that?
76,000?
Yeah, 76,000, yeah.
It was 76,000.
That's with the benefits package.
Yes. Correct?
76,000, but that is just the salary. So the real number for you is probably about, what, 30% additional?
It says in there, communication liaison with benefits.
With benefits, yeah.
Okay, so it's with benefits.
That amount is, I believe that the salary was somewhere around 50,000, and that this was the included, the benefit amount.
And to repeat, the county has a similar position. Correct?
I don't know that they do currently. They do not currently.
They did, they have reconfigured it.
And it, it looks like an administrative assistant position now, is what I see.
As you were talking, Hannah Seat, like you were talking about that the value to the community as well, you know, with things coming in, trying to draw people to Ottawa. I think, like you said, that's a great tool to reach out to, through social media, through other platforms that, you know, they would obviously know. Reach people in Alayta who are looking and might be like, oh, I haven't heard of Ottawa, or I've seen Ottawa now. Like you said, kind of telling that story, I think, can really help bring some of that kind of urban sprawl potentially.
It doesn't hurt.
Yeah. You know, how many people in Alayta maybe have never heard of Ottawa or have heard of it, don't know what it is, where it is, and this could kind of help facilitate some of that.
Just puts a positive spin on our community. It's us telling our story, and right now, we're allowing auto Kansas news to tell our story.
Can I add something? So I, as you know, I work for a larger, a larger employer or garden city, sorry, bring that. bring that up. But we, a number of years after I started there in 2006, a number of years into my tenure, they added the communications position to do exactly what we're talking about. And they developed a communications plan to, you know, address everything that you're talking about. So this, it is common, but I know there, the evidence still sending the same message out.
Well, I think you're absolutely right. I think the, the naysayers are the ones that are most likely telling the, the story of the city of Ottawa. We certainly need somebody on our team to, to rebut some of those comments, for sure. Director Landis, you mentioned some of these lease options. I mean, if we're trying to accommodate 76,500, I mean, I certainly see something, you know, a few things up there we possibly could move around.
We could. I actually, and I also brought another list of ideas, and, and I guess this can kind of, I guess, show you that within a budget, there is some flexibility in order to accomplish the things that we want to. And, and a number of them might be, you know, we proposed a full-blown compensation study, we could reduce that to 50%. That would provide a savings of 20,000 and split it up between two years. It's not a recommended move, but it is something we could do. We could reduce our COLA calculations that we've included by half percent. That would generate a $30,000 difference. We could reduce our transfer to the risk management fund, reducing the overall fund balance slightly. It's not a huge decrease, but it is an opportunity. We could reduce the annual transfer to the airport fund. We talked about it originally. I did mention it in my memo. I had put it back up to the, the original amount, but it could generate a, a $22,000 difference by just putting, reducing it down to 35,000 instead of 57,000 annually, or even just for one year. It's also another option. It's not detrimental to that fund at all. We could, the cemetery did offer that they could defer the purchase of one of their mowers from 2023 to 2024. That's a $17,000 difference. We could lease purchase one or more of those vehicles. Again, depends on what the timing of that might be. May not even have to do it, you know, if we account for timing of vehicle building right now. Or you could take that reserve balance that we've included, and you could redo, reduce it by the amount, or you could take any one of these options and combine them together. So while everything that we recommended to you is just the way that we, we put the budget together, we do have some flexibility. And that's what I was trying to say early on, is I, I think that there's probably no one, I wouldn't, I wouldn't offer to you that there's some of these, if they're a bad, puts you in a bad situation, any one option, but we could use any one of those things to try and move us ahead.
I appreciate all those options. Quite frankly, coal is off the table for me. I don't think that's an idea. I'm sorry, we're having employee retention issues at this point, and I don't want to deter anybody from sticking around. I do have one question about the, so when you do the budget impact, and I'll just throw this out there, just the bottom one, so it's easy to read, on the police, when the, that you'd be saving 41,575. Now, I know there's probably, if you lease, there's some interest involved there. So would that include the interest?
I included the interest. I included a 3%, because we don't exactly know where we're gonna land next year, but I did over five years on a 3%.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a, that's a pretty good number, then. I mean, we're not looking at, who has 41 and taxing it to 35 or something. It's a pretty good number. Okay.
Right, right. And I would say, while, while it's probably not chief's preference, the patrol vehicles seem to be the one that he is able to get earlier in the year. The other ones, we're having a lot of difficulty with. And while it does really mess with his budgeting each year, and having to include that in there in his operational budget and split it out over time, those are the ones that do, that are a little more stable in being produced, and, and might be an opportunity there. But like I said, I would rather come back later and say, this is how we've decided to divvy up those dollars amongst those vehicles and equipment purchased by the lease purchase options, especially as we get into what those vehicle costs look like later in the year. Because even though we saw a really huge uptick in cost of vehicles now and equipment, that may stay level. It might go up, and it might go down. We really don't know in six to 12 months from now. So anything can change, and we'd like to be able to change with it.
Some of this, yeah, page here, when you look at the budget impact, if you're going to add up all those five there, it's over $200,000.
So it is. And if you recall our conversation before, where I, it's not ever going to be my recommendation that we lease purchase everything, because all you're doing is deferring the, the, the problem to the next four years. And each of those next four years, you're going to have other things that you need to fund. And so I would, I would, I would prefer that we do have, find a really good balance in there somewhere. A little bit of the lease purchasing or financing of vehicles and projects, and then also find other ways to be creative with the other purchases that we make, or the things that we fund.
That's what I was wondering, because I know the iron rate's gonna go higher, of course, next year will be higher than this year, if we finance this, be better. But I've often thought, if we can somehow combine two years' worth of financing in one year this year, and do nothing next year, but we don't know what we will need next year in the way of financing, if something...
And I will tell you, that would sound like a really, three or four years ago, I would say, yes, let's do that. That sounds like a great way. Let's start packaging some things together, see what that might look like. And this year, there are a large handful of vehicles and equipment we can't even get yet. So even if we thought we were going to lease purchase them this year, you can't lease purchase them until you purchase them, and they can't be purchased. So, so it really throws off your ability to do a lot of things and plan, so. No, and hopefully, we'll be back to more normal in the next year or two, and we'll be able to really start planning better for that. And I would also say that along the lines of the reserve that was built in here, even if we were to say something like, let's not make any other changes to the budget right now, but let's come back and make, take another look at it later this year, there might be an opportunity yet later this year, that if we, if there's some funding that, or some, say, our sales taxes continue to climb, that we haven't accounted for, because we've got conservative estimates in there, and we find that there are dollars more than what we have to start next year with for a beginning fund balance, you might then be able to go back and replenish that, or add something back to the budget that we may have otherwise, you know, recommended that we either remove or defer, so.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Kayler. I think this is an important part, it should be, it should be added to our budget. I think it should be put back in. I think at this point, with everything that's running down the pike, that we need to, we need to, we need to utilize every arrow that's in the quiver. And this is another one that we certainly we need, we need to utilize. So if we can do, you know, some, have some discussion about how we, we integrate this into our budget, I, I'm all ears.
Look, can I ask a follow-up question, then? Would you prefer that we keep what we've proposed as the mill rate the same here, or are you proposing, and by finding other savings within that budget, or are you proposing that we increase the mill rate for the general fund?
I'm glad you bring that up.
That will make a difference.
I'm glad you bring that up. Because, and I'm gonna go kind of squirrel, sorry, on another area. But I honestly think that we need to consider, that I think there's a few things we need to consider on our plate, that I don't think we've been willing to really consider monetarily in the past. You know, we are looking at decreasing our budget approximately a half a mil, yet every single year since I've been here, we've been talking about aquatics. Every single year. We have yet to give aquatics. And aquatics is a quality of life issue. Our swimming pool is so old, so old. But it's a quality of life issue. And we're talking about how to sell our story. Our swimming pool does not sell our story. So I think that we need to be serious about allocating some funds to funding this quality of life issue. And I know that, you know, even if we were to, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to consider, to consider a half a mil for aquatics for next year, it's not gonna build a pool. But maybe it pays for a plan that helps tell us how we can get a pool and new aquatics in our community. Yes.
I, I think you have to look at this as a three to five-year project. You have a couple of windows coming up down the road, where we're gonna be renewing a half cent for proximity park, and I think a half cent for the general fund. But I think both the finance director and I, I think you may not need the full half cent for proximity park. You could maybe split that in half, and you could offer up a quarter cent to pay for a new pool, because, because it's either gonna come out of somebody being benevolent, giving you the money for that, or it's gonna come out of the property tax, and may still, or it'll get funded with a, some element of the sales tax or a blend. But first, you have to know what you need. And the, the best way to do that, and I've been through a couple of these things, is you actually put out an RFQ, and you start interviewing firms that can help you get to where the community thinks they want to be. And the most important part of that equation is that you need to take the story to the community. The community from the base up is, has to be involved in this process, and has to be right there with you, telling you what they think they need, what they want. And you have to dream big to get down to what's practical. But Sarah's right. We, we have talked about it for a number of years, but we have never set any specific money aside to start the process. And it is, I hope that's a hot news flash.
Quality of life, I feel like.
But it at least gets you started down the road. It signals to the community that you are serious about upgrading one of the most important assets you have.
And I think for growth, just in terms of that as well, communicating and showing a plan that in X years, that works for this new pool is, you know, just, I know how many people from our community go to Gardner, go to Lawrence, go to Baldwin, you know, for the pools that offer things that ours don't.
And the reality of it is, they'll still go.
Yeah.
But we should offer an amenity here, that people from Gardner drive here, Baldwin drive here, Topeka drive here. I mean, that's, that's just part of it.
Well, if we don't start now, we're just gonna continue kicking that can down the road. And another issue we have is the fact that the pool's losing water, and lots of water, and we need to do something about it anyway.
So I, I wonder if we might not want to, I would be in favor of us thinking about just publishing a rate of exactly what we had last year, and then having a discussion about how half a mil there, which that would leave two hundredths of a mil left, which is not gonna obviously fund the communication piece, but a little bit of it, how we can utilize some of those funds just a little bit different. So.
Well, somehow, even if we went with a 45, 446 as a published rate, and still work with negotiating the finance lease options.
I hate to kick the can down the road. I mean, I, the reality is, I'm not gonna be here.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm okay with some of the money maybe starting a reserve fund for a new pool, but maybe using some of the, out the money, the impacts, we've talked about financing, is what I'm saying, offsetting some of that money, maybe having 62,000, which would be a half a mil basically, one way or another.
Well, half of that mil maybe could pay for the communication person.
Some of this could be, yeah. I guess, I mean, again, this is my background, and I, I like this part of it, and I think it's, it's feasible to, to use leverage to help us get what we want to get, but.
Well, and as I've said several times, I mean, we can go lower, but we can't go any higher. So, you know, we could always, well, if we figure out some better solutions than what we're even thinking about now. I mean, I know sometimes, just as you let it mull over in your mind, that people come up with things, but might not hurt to be able, you know, as we said, kind of keep it the same as this year, and then be able to, we could, we could still lower it if we decided to do the lease option, or however that looks.
And that's a key point. The nice thing, if there is one, about this project, and the elongated project, is that once you publish, you still have a number of meetings in between. You can make some decision points up to and including the night that you have your budget here. But as been said several times, just remember, once you set it here, you can always lower what you can increase. And we have done that, haven't we? Have we always lowered it for what we stated?
I think, not last year, but maybe in the previous years.
Historically, I think Commissioners Skidmore, when you and I have been on here, we've, we've made some kind of cut, so it looks like there's some, I mean, so there is some concessions that happened there. I just, the reality of it is, is that I don't, I just, I have heartburn thinking that we can continue to cut, and cut, and cut, and cut, when our citizens want more, and more, and more, and more. And you just cannot get more. I mean, the value of the dollar, I mean, you know, Commissioners Skidmore, it's just, it's not the same as it was when you and I started on the commission. It's just not. And so we cannot continue to say, we're going to give more, but say, I'm sorry, you know, you don't get a COLA this year. If you get a half a percent less COLA, or whatever, we just, I just can't.
Yeah, I just think I hear more people complain about property taxes than, than sales taxes.
And, and the city's 20% of a property, of their property tax value, if you live in the city of Ottawa. So about 22% if you consider the, the library, so.
Oh, go ahead.
No, please.
Kind of what you mentioned, and Richard, you had mentioned this as well, with possibly doing something with sales tax as well. Personally, I'm just a firm believer, I like sales tax because it's a choice. I'm, you know, I'm actively purchasing something, whether that's gas that I need, I'm still making a choice. And I think...
Do you want to purchase that right now?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I know.
But I have to. And I think just kind of overall, that sales tax spreads that, you know, across people who are visiting, you know, on I-35, who are driving by. There are other people then who would also be paying for that over time. And so I like that idea of kind of something blended as well, to keep that kind of rolling.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, when, when, if we can take a quarter out, a quarter percent of that half cent sales tax out, and, and focus it, you know, on aquatics, that's a great idea. I mean, you've got folks that'll never use that pool, they're paying taxes, and that's, that's great.
But we can never, we can never do it if we don't have the, if we don't have the proposals and things sitting in front of us to say, this is what it's gonna take. And so we have to do the pre-work, and that's why I'm hoping we can do the pre-work with this half a mil, on what we need with aquatics.
And, and quite frankly, there's been a lot of discussion about what we've done out there, and what, you know, and, and what isn't done out there. And if that can start the ball rolling on Aquatics Center also, that's just another thing that we can say, look, if somebody comes, when somebody comes, that's great, but look what it's also done in the meantime.
So here's another way to look at that. Dennis, what did that repair cost us last year? $60,000?
Yeah, we were $60,000.
Just patchy. Yeah. So the $60,000, if you include that in next year's budget, is better spent with, at the end of the road, having a new facility, instead of spending 60 to 100,000 on repairs.
Did you guys try Flex Seal?
Golly, that.
I saw it on the commercial.
It must work, right? It must work. Begins to nice. Yes.
Even just the water that we're losing in the pool, as the mayor alluded to, is significant, you know. When you equate that to dollars, you know, you get into that, you know, $50,000 range someplace, you know, that it's just, you don't have a drink.
It's certainly not free to open the pool every day, yeah, or every year.
And the purpose of you...
And the purpose of using that sales tax for construction, it really does take the, like, the capital part and it puts it, it really formulates what that might look like. Cause you have projections, right? You can use that to help determine exactly what the cost of that is going to be overall and how you'll be able to support it and what you might still have to put into it. And the operations are left up to the rest of the budget, which, you know, right now is running out outside of the city anyway. So.
Yeah, I would, I would just remind you this. It's easy to build the capital investment. But when you build a new aquatic center or a swimming pool, your operations expenses are going to increase also. And when you look at the capital expense, part of the help you can get from an outside firm is also take a look at the operations expense. Because that, that is just a, that is an ongoing expense.
So based on everything that I've heard here, what I feel like are, are marching orders for Wednesday and for, for tonight and tomorrow morning to put in the packet for you would be to redo this only slightly to show that the thirty-one point nine seven mils for the general fund would increase to, and I'll go back and calculate this exactly, but thirty-two point four nine for the general fund. And what that will look like is the inclusion of the dollars for the communications liaison and the aquatics plan, the, or some aquatics type of money, which would be probably money would transfer to a reserve. And so if we say that there's about sixty thousand for the aquatics, that leaves about seventy-two thousand that we need to come up with, the seventy-seven thousand for the position. And we can go back and look and come back and discuss that later in August about how you would like to, the changes you want to make in the detail, I guess, that would support whatever budget you'd like to approve after the public hearing. So if we were to go ahead and publish that at the highest, the higher, the forty-five point nine six eight, which is the rate from last year, or this current year, I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-two, that gives us that amount that's in there. And then we would still need to find additional dollars within the current budget recommended to fund both of them. But is that where you want to land with this? I wanna make sure you're not, not asking to publish more than the forty-five point nine six eight, which is for twenty-two, but to publish at that rate? And then we can come back and determine exactly how that will get, those two items will get funded later. Yep. Okay. Because we do have, the other part of this is that I made an error at the last meeting. I suggested that we change the dates and all the times and I'm sorry you had to have that conversation, but we went back and we looked and we cannot hold the public hearing before August twentieth. And so we were three days off. And so the first time we actually can hold the public hearing is September seventh. And that's a seven o'clock meeting anyway, which is still, we, we, we can publish or we can do the, actually submit it to the county no later than October one anyway. So we do still have time. If September seventh works for you, we can publish at that date. If not, we'll change that also. But I apologize for that mistake. But.
September seventh works for me.
Much better.
I may have to be on Zoom, but I'll be here.
Now, the other option would be you could hold the public hearing that night and approve and adopt a budget on, at another meeting date. But because there's only two regular meetings, it might be better to at least consider that discussion the same evening as that public hearing. And if you need to hold it over or carry it over, we could do that for the second meeting, of course, then, which would be the ten AM, the second meeting in September. But that would be the only, the last opportunity to consider approval at that time.
So on Wednesday, you're going to ask them to approve the forty-five point nine six eight.
Correct.
At what point will we give them a publication to approve with everything in it?
Tomorrow morning when the packet comes out, this will be in it.
Go ahead and wait till lunch. Okay. We're gonna give you till lunch.
We're gonna work all night.
Yes.
Every other fund will be in there.
Every other fund, as it's already been presented to you, will be in there. Let me go to this next slide. These funds, and we did include the detail or the summary in your packet for these funds. Unless you have specific questions, which you might, and we can totally talk about them. These all are funds here that are special revenue and while this doesn't include all of the money, some of them do include in the expenditure amount, a reserve balance being included in case new projects come up. For example, I believe there's a reserve amount for Special Highway for certain, there is an amount included in Economic Development, the capital improvement amount is, oh, I'm sorry, there's not anything in that one at the end. I believe there's some extra dollars in risk management. But these aren't property tax funds. These are just a way of managing the, the dollars that are available and looking at available fund balances over time and trying to determine what fits this year, what projects are upcoming, how are we gonna have enough funds to fund all of those things? Do you have questions on these specifically?
I have a specific question on Land Bank because I love the Land Bank so much, I wanna talk about it more and more. And I know that the two other individuals that sat here with me for the Land Bank probably have equal love for how that went. But it, there is a line item on, I'm on page thirty-three of the agenda, where it says that there's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars in reserve for future improvement, but then it's not on, should it be somewhere?
Oh, okay.
I'm just wondering where that's going.
It's not going anywhere. But it is something that the Land Bank group needs to decide, what you want to do with those dollars. So what was most important about this to me is that we do need to transfer that amount to debt service to cover the remaining years of debt service payments. And we do, would like to return the ten thousand to Economic Development that we originally funded the Land Bank with. After that, and after expenses with the revenue that was brought in from the sale of the property, it does leave you the hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Now, that's an estimate on my part because I think we did just have like some mowing expenses and we may have some other things. But we do want to have a conversation with you as the Land Bank to determine how you want to spend those dollars. But the important part of this is that it's not budgeted for twenty-twenty-three. We would love for you to make those decisions in twenty-twenty-two so that we can decide how that money is going to be spent. And in reality, it may easily be spent. I mean, you probably could easily spend that.
And there may be some more work you wanna do out of Coves. For example, that ride in, ride out, you may wanna consider just taking that out of there in the Coves where it empties on the Davis Avenue. And then it's wonderful to have as a planner, but anyway, you know, we're ride in, ride in out, and it could make the traffic flow better if you just took that out. There may be some other things you wanna do it, or you might wanna use it on some sort of other housing program also.
If that takes a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to take out that ride in, ride out.
And I'm not suggesting that.
I know you're not. I'm just giving you a hard time.
In the list of things, you may wanna include that. I'm pretty sure that Dennis could demo it for far along.
The, the other, the other item maybe in there was there is a piece of sidewalk extension that is on, it follows the city properties internally that we talked about that could be used for. So there's a variety of things that you could use it for. And I think initially you talked about it could be transferred just for Economic Development, all kinds of options. But the goal here would be if you want to take care of it in twenty-two, we'll leave it like this. If you want to carry over and continue the discussions into twenty-three, then I will write this differently. So thank you for bringing it up.
I personally don't want to give, to give that special gift to Mayor Proton Skidmore. I would like to address it because let's just get rid of that Land Bank if we can. Or not get rid of it, but just cease using it.
That's right. I'll get those committed.
The Land Bank itself will stay and play, but the dollars will be, will be completed from the Coves.
It serves its purpose and well.
Well, I, I wouldn't tell you this, you're always gonna have the Land Bank there. It's always authorized. Some cities do different things with Land Bank, with the Land Bank. But hopefully you're not gonna have another Coves. And I think it's fine to keep it on the books in case you do have another spatial situation to use a Land Bank for. Don't complicate your life.
I would also say if at some future point, or when we get back together to talk about that, or have that discussion about Land Bank, if you decide to leave an amount of money in this fund, because in the future you may need to have expenses here, you may, you know, for whatever reason, if something else does come up, then you don't have to go looking other places to fund the initial start of something. You could do that. We could leave this the same now, but we can always come back and do a budget amendment because the fund exists. Just the money, we need to decide what to do with it later. So if you, if you like it like this, we'll leave it like this. If you wanna do something different, we can change that up. We can change it up all the way up to the time that we adopt the budget in September. So if you have other thoughts between now and the next couple of conversations we have about the detail, we can still change that. Or we can, yeah, do an amendment. There's options there.
Well, I guess we've got a park that's a Coves. I mean, it could be used for some playground equipment or park benches or shelter house or the, what a discussion.
I don't know the answer to that.
And I think that'd have to be a discussion that we'd have to have within the Land Bank meeting and we can't make that decision here, but.
Right. Right now, we're just talking about how you'd like to see the dollars budgeted for, yeah, what you want the actual budget authority to be for that fund, then you can make the determination for the Land Bank. But keep that in mind. Are there other questions on these funds, the, the way that they're presented? And then if not on these, then on the enterprise or the utility funds, as I said, the revenues were placed in here with the idea that we will bring back a suggestion for rate changes on each of them with the exception of stormwater. But that doesn't actually really change the expenditure budget. Within the expenditure budget, it doesn't necessarily also include a reserve amount. Instead, it does show you what those ending fund balances might be if we approve at this level. Now, like I said, we have a lot of work yet to do. We don't want the water fund ending fund balance to be a hundred and forty-seven thousand. That doesn't give me any warm and fuzzy feeling. And also, we'd like to see the electric fund and the wastewater fund be even higher than that. But some of it's going to be more conversation about what do we finance? Are there other, you know, other opportunities for funding some of those bigger improvements that we have coming? And each of those utilities are, you know, we have private utilities and they take a lot of dollars for construction and maintenance and all of those things and to continue those. So those are continued conversations we're having internally.
This is what I was thinking typically, should the revenues exceed the expenditure you care?
Typically.
Typically.
So it's the banker. Yes. Yes. So.
And that's why it's so glaring. I mean, looking at this, it is so glaring that we need regular.
Yes.
We have got to do something for the bank.
And in addition to, that, that's with the, with a rate increase included, those revenue numbers are, and they're still below the expenditures. So we do have even more work. And because, because remember, those increases are intended to be smaller, more intentional, continuous increases so that we're not coming back and hitting any one, any one fund or any one utility with a really high increase. But unfortunately, it also takes a lot longer to accumulate more revenue for each one of those funds.
I wish this, this particular slide was, I guess, I'm gonna say it in a, in a positive motion. When we have a communication liaison, I would hope that this data would be something that they'd wanna share with others when they say, ours is the highest ever, ours is the highest electric, they just make money on, no, we really don't. We're not making money on any of this. The city's not, no, we're not.
And when we come back to you with that further rate discussion, we'll bring some of that more detailed information to you in different slide presentation without really having to get into the nitty gritty here. But absolutely, there's a story to be told there and I think you can show it, show what that story is and how utilities really do work. If you're okay with at least publishing these expenditure amounts, of course, this will be the maximum expenditures for each of those funds. But we do have the opportunity because they are, they have their own revenue source, we can always amend them. I don't like doing budget amendments, I really don't. I would prefer it just included. And in fact, we probably should have just included some of the reserves in each one of those funds so you had a little more flexibility. I don't believe that that's included in the expenditures authority here necessarily, but given the timeframe that we're in, and this would set the maximum expenditure amount, we can always come back and see what we need to do later. So this is our budget schedule going forward. Again, the slight change to the public hearing date to September seventh, at seven, that will be noted on the intent to exceed form and the public hearing notice. And then we'll have both, our recommendation to you would be to move both of those items onto your regular agenda if you would consider that, that would help us meet the statutory guideline there. And we would, what we would bring to you would be a publication tomorrow with the agenda packet that would show a level mill rate with the twenty-twenty-two current mill rate.
Commissioners, are we consensus with that?
Excellent.
Yeah, I think you're good to go in the board to do that.
Okay. And then should we plan on having two Monday study session meetings prior to the public hearings so that we can maybe vet out the rest of the details then and how we wanna find each of those other, these two items and.
Yeah, I think.
Those can be short conversations really centered around specific topics. We won't drag you through all the details again, I know that's probably not to me. Okay. Do you have any, any other questions for me?
Nope. Okay.
That it?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For it, there moves on to comments by our city manager.
I have none.
Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Graves.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kayla.
None at this time.
Commissioner Clayton.
None at this time.
Mayor Proton Skidmore.
None today.
I have no comments either. We have a few announcements, the July twentieth regular meeting at ten AM this Wednesday. We have a study session July twenty-fifth, four PM, and a study session August first. Is there anything else that comes forward to commission tonight? Collier?